Good evening, I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I called order this September 5th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday. Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh. And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Monday called today, he had a conflict that he had to be at, and so he expressed his regrets, he couldn't be with us tonight. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, would you please join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, our Sergeant Arms tonight is Lieutenant Tyler Wally. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We do have one honorarium tonight, ask the city clerk if she would to read that.
Item H1, proclamation declaring September 2023 as National Service Dog Month. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and the inclusivity of all citizens, and whereas in the United States 64 million adults and children have a disability with only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs nationwide, and the need is growing. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead a life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. And whereas the city of Winston-Salem continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now therefore, I, J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Service Dog Month.
Thank you, and we have with us tonight Margaret Ann Hoffler and her service dog, our service dog Gillespie III. Margaret Ann?
He's in training. He's in training.
We're glad to recognize the work that's done for this important service to... Sorry about that. Margaret Ann, we're glad to recognize the work that's being done in training service dogs and the important work that they do and the service they provide to individuals who need that. And Gillespie, you look like you're having a lot of fun tonight. So Margaret Ann, here's your proclamation, and if you'd like to say a word or two, please feel free to.
Oh my, okay. I appreciate the city recognizing the importance of service dogs. Service dogs are different than emotional support dogs or guide dogs for the blind. They are trained in very specific skills for somebody who's disabled, in a wheelchair, who's deaf, or who has severe PTSD. Canine Companions is not-for-profit, largest service dog breeder and training organization in the country. It's based in La Jolla, California, and its southeast regional office, one of six offices, is in Orlando. So people like me, who's a volunteer puppy raiser, has the puppy from age two months to 18 months. Then we pass it back to Canine Companions, where they do six months of very intensive, specific skill training for people with those disabilities. So while it'll be hard, everybody says, how are you going to give him up? And how's our lab going to give him up? We love him, but we know somebody needs him. There are... Usually Canine Companions donates about 400 service dogs a year, and there are another 400 people on the waiting list to receive them. Adults, children of any ages. So we encourage anybody that's interested in raising a puppy to explore Canine Companions. It's such a worthwhile and needed cause.
Thank you, Margaret Ann.
Very much.
Bring Gillespie back anytime.
Thank you.
Tonight's agenda of the city council was comprised of the following items. We have a UDO text amendment, a voluntary annexation, a zoning petition, there are two economic development items, and a resolution related to the Reynolds Park Golf Course. Five of these items are listed as public hearings, and when these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. Now, when wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the city council will consider the item. Do have one zoning case, and if there's opposition to this item, the proponents and the opponents will be given 15 minutes for presentation and then three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, obviously I'll close that public hearing as well. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow, Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m., and again tomorrow night at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available to members of the public on the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" options. So maybe we have item number one, please.
Item Z1, Public Hearing on Ordinance Amending the Unified Development Ordinances to Add Graphics Illustrating Various Ordinance Provisions, UDO CC24.
Thank you. Dan Rankin is going to give us a brief summary of this item. Dan?
Sir, hold the PowerPoint. All right. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the city council. My name's Dan Rankin, and I'm a project planner in the Planning Development Service Department, and I'm here this evening to present to you UDO CC24, which is a proposed text amendment to the UDO for the inclusion of new and improved graphics to that document, to better illustrate the ordinance for our users and readers, and just to make the document more user-friendly. So a few notes, this came about back in 2018. Staff in the planning department were working with an external consultant on the development of the UDO, and one of that consultant's main comments was, at the time, the UDO included a few graphics and could greatly benefit from new and improved graphics. So as a consequence of that, staff developed an initial set of 24 graphics, which were approved in the fall of 2020 as part of UDO CC3. And staff also developed a consistent visual style to accompany those graphics, a 3D visual style. We'll see some examples here in a moment. One additional note, this, the development of additional graphics was a key work program item for the planning board during the last fiscal year. I feel it's really important to note that these graphics do not alter or otherwise edit the existing ordinance provisions or legal language of the UDO. Instead, staff is merely seeking to illustrate the UDO. A total of 93 graphics are proposed as part of this text amendment, and again, we generally utilized that pre-established 3D visual style, but we weren't shy. We occasionally used more traditional 2D drawing methods where we felt it was appropriate, where we felt it better illustrated the requirements. A few additional notes, and then I will get to some examples. Staff, we did seek to strike a balance between having these graphics be too literal and to abstract. We also sought to strike a balance with the amount of text included in the graphics. We didn't want to overwhelm the readers with too much text, but we didn't want to water down the requirements either and make them less useful. And a majority of these graphics are brand-new to the UDO, although many of them are replacements for existing graphics. This first graphic is, it illustrates the general dimensional requirements for the residential multifamily limited district, our RMU district. This is a good example of that 3D visual style that staff previously developed. It's also a good example of the color scheme that staff had previously selected. And I'm also happy to note that with this text amendment, we now have similar graphics to these for all of our different general dimensional requirements tables. So we, for most of, most all of our zoning districts now have graphics similar to these. Here's an example of a use-specific standard graphic. This graphic illustrates the requirements for small home child daycare uses. This, this is a fairly simple example of this type of graphic, some of the other ones go more complicated. We do see a fair amount of these permitted, so we feel it'll be useful. This appears in Chapter 5 of the UDO, and again, it's, it's an illustration of the small home child daycare uses and some of its requirements. Here we have an example of a replacement graphic. This graphic illustrates the, both these graphics, I should say, illustrate minimum dimensions for parking lots in our city and county. Graphic on the right-hand side is the existing graphic, left-hand side is the replacement graphic in color. And last example of a graphic from UDO CC24, this graphic is another replacement graphic. This graphic illustrates the definitions of a yard within our UDO. And again, the existing graphic is on the right, replacement is on the left, and we used a bit of additional color this one, just to kind of make it pop. In summary, staff, we do believe that the graphics, including this amendment, do substantially complete the process of illustrating the UDO. However, we also certainly recognize that additional graphics may be warranted as the UDO changes in the future and as new planning and zoning concepts get introduced. Background, different body recommendations, the planning board did hear the item at its June public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and planning board voted unanimously recommend the request. The item was also heard at the August Community Development Housing and General Government Committee meeting, and that committee also similarly made a recommendation to approve the text amendment for full counsel. And last item, I'll leave this, I'll leave it here, this is an example of an existing graphic in our UDO. This one illustrates the requirements for accessory dwelling units within the city of Winston-Salem. I want to stress, this is an existing graphic, it's not part of the UDO CC24 packet, but it was discussed at the last committee meeting, so I certainly wanted to share it with you all again this evening, since it's a citing new planning concept within our code. So with that, I'll leave it at that, and I'll certainly be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Rankin? Mr. McIntosh?
Not a question, more a comment. This goes a long way towards helping people who don't deal with the UDO day-to-day. Professionals in the field can work their way through this and figure out and understand it, but people who don't look at it every day and want to find something out, this just goes a long way towards making them feel more comfortable and being able to understand the nonsense, so they're not, they don't feel like they're just lost in space. So I applaud this, and it's, and I'm sure it will evolve into the future, so thank you.
You, Councilman Cipio?
I love this. Color is always great, graphics are, tell a story better oftentimes than just words. So I really love this. My question is, will this complete the graphics in our UDO? Are there more to come?
Um, I, I, well, I mean, as I said earlier, we, I think it completes it, I don't know. It's as much a question for Chris, maybe, as you refer to the director. What do you think, Chris?
Generally speaking, we don't have anything else in our work program, but certainly as, as Dan alluded to, as we introduce new concepts into the ordinance, or if we, you know, find something that someone is having a problem with, or that we feel like a graphic would help explain better, we're certainly not averse to bringing that, bringing something forward, but you know, generally speaking, this completes the graphic set, but we're always willing to bring back more if we feel like they're needed.
I know that our attachment was 134 pages, so I was just curious, is that all of it or not?
Of course, you know, the UDO in and of itself is 700, 750 pages, and you know, so again, with putting 90-some page, 90-some new graphics in there, it just ends up being a lot, but the, the length of our UDO won't substantially change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rankin.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in council chamber who'd like to be heard on this proposed UDO amendment? Yes?
I was just going to say-
Sir, come up to the thing, give your name and address for the record, please.
I just, I just wanted to say as a someone who's-
Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Ekstrom, 2415 Peachtree.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, as electrician and contractor all my life, I've done plans all my life, and I remember the, the old blue, you know, they were blueprints, and this is really great, and I remember when this stuff came out, and that's really good, and I just wondered if that green, is that Monopoly green? It does, it does, and people will get it, people will get it, I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed, and Mayor Pro Tim, this did come from your committee, I'd recognize you for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move to approve UDO text amendment to amend the UDO to add graphic illustrating various UDO provisions, UDO CC24. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, UDO CC24.
There we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That motion passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good job. Item Z2?
Item Z2, Public Hearing on Petition for the Voluntary Annexation of Approximately 4.015 Acres Located West of Steyer's Ferry Road and South of Wood Cove Drive. The project is known as Steyer's Ferry Road, this is a petition of Abjit Chadopadhyay, closest to the west ward.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this voluntary annexation? Another petitioner is here, if it's any questions. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and I'll recognize Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of Agenda Item Z2.
Second. Motion, second. Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous, thank you. Item Z3?
Item Z3, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Lyndon Needham and Scott Needham from LBL HBS and RS12 to HBS. Property is located at southeast intersection of University Parkway and Laura Avenue, containing approximately 2.77 acres located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
We will have a public hearing on this. First, for the proponents, you'd have 15 minutes. Luke Dickey, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Ms. Burke, I know we had discussions about this earlier, the request possibly for a continuance. I don't know if that's appropriate, appropriate time to request that now, or if you want me to go ahead and go through a presentation at this point.
I'd recognize Councilmember Burke, if you'd like to offer that we continue this.
Yes, I would, so-
To the next zoning-
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I move to continue Agenda Item Z3 until the council, city council's meeting on October 2nd, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Burke, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh, to continue this item to October the-
Second.
Second. Ms. Carmen?
Make a note that the public hearing is being held open.
We'll keep, thank you, and the public hearing will be kept open until that time. All those in favor, we've already voted on it. So we're, is in favor, thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item Z4?
Item Z4, Public Hearing on Resolution Authorizing Economic Development Assistance for Project Fiesta Pursuant to NCGS 158-71.
Mr. Millet, would you tee us up on this one, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and members of city council.
Good evening.
When we have talked about this project in enclosed session, and at Finance Committee we referred to it as Project Fiesta, we're now talking about it by the company's name, which is Purple Crow. They are a distributor of authentic Mexican food products that were founded in Winston-Salem in 1995. The company recently completed an expansion of its cold storage facility and is looking to relocate its operations and headquarters. A building in Whittaker Park is one of several locations being considered, including Georgia and other locate, other sites in North Carolina. The company is seeking financial assistance to reduce its capital cost for the project, which would create 199 new jobs over its first five years at an average salary of $72,000. Taxable capital investment is estimated to be $50 million over five years, and the facility should be operational by the end of 2024. The attached resolution authorizes the city to provide up to $694,281 in performance-based incentives to Purple Crow. This represents 50% of the net new property taxes expected to be generated over the first five years. Incentives are also being considered by Forsyth County, as well as the state of North Carolina. And from Greater Winston-Salem Inc., we have Laura Lee, Ellis Kiefer, and Calvin McCray. We also have a representative of the company, Dan Calhoun, is here in support of the project as well.
Any questions, Mr. Millet? We've talked about this several times. Thank you, Mr. Millet. This is a public hearing, and would certainly entertain any comments anyone would like to make on, on this item. Ms. Lee?
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and members of council. And I guess it's name and address for the record, Laura Lee, 525 Vine Street. We are really excited about Project Fiesta, and the company's headquarters has been here for several decades, and their commitment to our community and being able to grow here in a very timely way. We also know that these types of jobs will be able to span all types of citizens throughout Winston-Salem, so we do know that these almost 200 jobs will really be substantial for our community, and we look forward to their growth here. I know that the CEO, Dan Calhoun, also looks forward to speaking.
Good. Dan? The pleasure of working with Dan on a couple of expansions there, so.
Good evening. My name is Dan Calhoun, 1527 Overbrook Avenue in Winston-Salem. Thank you all for entertaining this proposal, I'm very grateful. Councilman Cipio, we've had the pleasure of talking several times, and we are very happy to be considering this project and feel honored that we can have a chance to do that. We've been in Winston all of our life. One of the companies we started in 1986 was cutting grass, and those tractors are still out on city property, and they still, they still have that contract. In fact, we still know many of the guys and those tractors and have a life with them. And so we love Winston-Salem and hope this can all work out. Obviously, there's, we're still going through due diligence, but this will be a great delight if we can pull it off. So I just want to say thank you for entertaining this, and I don't know if you all have any questions for us, but I can answer them if you have any.
Yeah. Dan, thank you so much. We're so grateful for your investment in our city, continue investment, and Mayor Pro Tim?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Calhoun, I think you're moving to the north ward, right?
Yes.
Whittaker Park?
Well, I'm not sure what the-
I hope that you all will consider it, it's up and coming. We got new restaurants, commercial apartments near the stadium, the fairground, and I know I don't have to sell you, you know what's over there, but if you guys do make the decision to stay here, welcome to the north ward.
Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to getting to know you better, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing and would reckon, recognize a motion. Councilmember Clark?
I think I've got this one, hang on a minute. Yes. I move for approval of Agenda Item Z4.
Councilmember Clark?
Second.
Several seconds, we'll, we'll let the record show, is the Council, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, since it's going to her ward. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Councilmember Cipio, I'm sorry, I know you're already in the east ward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment?
You sure can.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank Purple Crow for being such a wonderful part of the east ward. They were, are in the first business park that Winston-Salem developed, which is on Lowry Street. They have grown, they have done a tremendous job, they employ folks, they're wonderful tractor-trailers, also keep our road challenged, and we are working on that, by the way, but we thank you, and I, we won't lose you, because you're staying, we want you to stay here in the city, and I am so happy that this opportunity came up, because I really was so saddened to hear that you needed somewhere to grow, and it couldn't be here, but I'm so happy it did work out for you and for us. So Mayor Pro Tim, that's what the east ward does, we grow, we soar, and then we let you share our excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Both, both the east and north win on this one. Mr. Millet, could you tee up item five, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening again. This is the second economic development project of the evening, and it's also-
Feel free to keep bringing them.
Right. And it's also the second that involves a homegrown company. This is a project that we have referred to simply as Project Crystal Ball to this point, but it does involve Pro Kidney, which as you know is a local biotechnology company that focuses on treatment for chronic kidney disease. As mentioned, the R currently headquartered in Winston-Salem, and they're considering an expansion of about approximately 53,000 square feet of its current headquarters and laboratory space on West Point Boulevard. Winston-Salem is one of several areas being considered, including other sites in North Carolina. The company is seeking financial assistance to reduce the capital cost of the project, which would create 50 new jobs over the first five years. Taxable capital investment is expected to total $21 million over the first five years. Company plans that the facility will be operational by the end of 2024. This resolution does authorize incentives of $310,141 in performance-based incentives. That represents 50% of the net new property taxes expected to be generated over the first five years. Incentives were improved by, were approved by Forsyth County last week for the project, and the state of North Carolina is also considering incentives. And I believe that Laura Ellis and Calvin remain in attendance in support of this project.
Any questions, Mr. Millet? Again, we've talked about this. Thank you, Mr. Millet. This is a public hearing, and would anyone like to speak regarding this proposed economic development deal? Ms. Lee?
Hello again. We are also excited about this opportunity, as Ken was mentioning, for another homegrown company to grow here and, and continue to grow their headquarters here. We, we had an announcement a couple months ago about a different manufacturing site for the company that stayed close to home, but not quite in, in our city bounds, but we know that their product is really transformational, and it's important for us to continue to have the growth in Winston-Salem, to really continue that regenerative medicine hub in our community. Thank you all for your support.
We'll keep the headquarters. Anyone else like to be heard on this particular item? And I'll close the public hearing, and Councilmember Clark?
Yes, I move for approval of Agenda Item Z5.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you all for the hard work on this, we'll look forward to the official announcement. Item Z6?
Item Z6, Resolution Authorizing the Renewal of an Additional Five-Year Agreement with T-Square Golf LLC for Management Services of Reynolds Park Golf Course for $540,000 over the contractual period.
Mr. Royston?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and members of city council.
Good evening.
In 2018, we advertised, we issued an RFQ, an RFP for the management services for Reynolds Park Golf Course. At that time, we selected T-Square Golf, their contract allowed for them to operate that facility for a period of five years. At the conclusion of those, of those first five years, we had the option of bringing back the renewal to council for an additional five years. We feel that over the course of the contractual period, they've been great partners, not only for the city of Winston-Salem, but also for the Recreation and Parks Department, and it's staff's recommendation to bring this contract back for another renewal for, for an additional five years, as we continue to work with our partners with T-Square Golf.
Thank you, Mr. Royston. Any questions, Mr. Royston? No, thank you, I entertain a motion, Mr. Clark?
I move for approval of Agenda Item Z6.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Royston. Thank you, councilmembers. We do have a need to go into closed session and I'd recognize Councilmember Clark again.
Let the record reflect, I have made every motion tonight and I'm absolutely exhausted.
I made one.
That's all I got.
I move the city council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A3 to discuss information, provide directions to legal staff and other city staff regarding potential legal matter, and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Mayor Protim Adams. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. Anyone opposed, we'll go into closed session. Thank you. You're busy.